Good evening, everyone. The February 2023 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called to order. Please join us. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Madam Mayor.
Good evening. The deceased residents for the month of January 2023. Constance Johnson. Charles Cunningham, a former Brookhaven police officer. Ann Jackson. Joseph Smigala. John Frame. Ralph Hamilton Jr. Frank Gallagher. And Pia Matera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Will, will you give us the roll call? Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Ms. Swicki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
Absent.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilworth. Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Weiss.
Here.
Roll call complete. Mrs. Heller.
Okay.
You've done this before.
Yeah, once or twice. Um, so a little housekeeping for tonight. We're gonna do a resolution for our two new police officers. Um, once I'm done the resolution, we're going to vote on it. Once council votes on it, then we will have Chief Weiss come up and say a few words. After that point, the mayor will come and actually swear in the new officers. Afterwards, we all can go to the community room and have cake. Um, so that's how it's going to go. So I'm gonna start with this first resolution. A resolution of the Borough of Brookhaven, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the hiring of Michael P. Connor to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department. Whereas Michael P. Connor is a proud Cardinal O'Hara High School alumni who also graduated from the Delaware County Municipal Police Academy with high honors in December of 2022. And whereas Michael P. Connor also attended the Williamson College of the Trades where he studied power plant technology. And whereas the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission recently conducted written and oral hiring examinations for the position of full-time patrolman in the police department. And whereas Michael P. Connor successfully completed the examinations as a candidate for such position and is ranked first on the commission's certified eligibility list. And whereas by correspondence dated January 18th, 2023, the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission has certified that Michael P. Connor has met all eligibility requirements for appointment to the position of full-time patrolman. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Brookhaven, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of same that Michael P. Connor shall be appointed to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department for a probationary period of 12 months. Upon completion of the probationary period and upon written notification from the mayor and the chief of police that Officer Michael P. Connor's performance has been satisfactory, such appointment shall be made permanent. Resolved this sixth day of February 2023, sealed and approved by John J. Wilworth Jr.'s secretary um, and signed by the President Terry Heller and as well as Mayor Denise Leslie.
It is the pleasure of the council. A motion is in order to adopt the resolution. Who would like the...
So moved.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Well, wait till you're sworn in, then we'll...
Yes.
We could change our mind.
Last minute decision.
No, I don't think so. Okay. So, a resolution of the Borough of Brookhaven, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the hiring of Orabi Yusef to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department. Whereas Orabi Yusef is a proud Chi-Chester High School alum who also graduated from Newman University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in December of 2017. And whereas Orabi Yusef presently serves as a full-time police officer in the city of Chester and was employed as a part-time officer in Traynor Borough in 2021. And whereas the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission recently conducted written and oral hiring examinations for the position of full-time patrolman in the police department. And whereas Orabi Yusef successfully completed the examinations as a candidate for such position and is ranked second on the commission's certified eligibility list. And whereas by correspondence dated January 18th, 2023, the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Commission has certified that Orabi Yusef has met all eligibility requirements for appointment to the position of full-time patrolman. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of Brookhaven, and is hereby resolved by the authority of same that Orabi Yusef shall be appointed to the position of full-time patrolman in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department for a probationary period of 12 months. Upon completion of the probationary period and upon written notification from the mayor and chief of police that Orabi Yusef's performance has been satisfactory, such appointment shall be made permanent. Resolved this sixth day of February 2023, sealed by John J. Wilworth Jr.'s secretary and also approved by Terry Heller, President, and approved also by Mayor Denise Leslie.
What say you, council?
The motion.
Who wants to move?
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries unanimously.
At this time, we'll have the chief come up and say a few words.
Good evening, chief.
Before I start, I do have to say it's, uh...
Make sure that mic's on, sir. Bottom. Don't let him know he has some value.
We're good. I have to start by saying it's nice to have another Cardinal O'Hara alum here. We also have a celebrity in the family. His mother is Mike Connor, who is the president of Cardinal O'Hara in our crowd here tonight, so we welcome you. Glad to see another O'Hara grad.
This is Vanguard, Vanguard country.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here tonight. I welcome our residents, fellow officers, and the family and friends of Michael Connor and Orabi Yusef as they are about to be sworn in as full-time officers with Brookhaven Borough Police Department. This is a special night for Michael and Orabi and their families, and also for our police department and our borough. I am honored to stand here tonight as these two men are sworn in and receive their badges. I thank you both for joining our department. You're gonna learn a lot. It is a fun career, but a serious one. This is a calling and not just a job. Our training, the service we provide, and commitment to doing the right thing are second to none. This is not to say you won't face adversity and have to overcome challenges during your career. Policing today is much more than writing police reports and arresting people. You will be a counselor to those in distress, a mediator assisting with disputes, assisting those suffering from mental illness, as well as many other situations. In this career, you are expected to be a jack-of-all-trades. But with all that said, it is one of the most rewarding careers you will ever have. Our community here in Brookhaven is an incredible one. They fully support their police department. Whether it's dropping off a tray of cookies, pizzas, or coffee, or simply thanking us while we're out on the street, it made a difference. This is the community that you joined tonight. You will have the opportunity to make a positive impact on people's lives. I ask you to be compassionate and caring while being aware of your surroundings and having a winning mindset. I would like to thank all of those that applied and took part in our testing process. It was a very competitive process. Michael and Orabi quickly stood out in this process as front-runners. They each bring very unique qualities to our department, and I'm confident that they will be an asset to our police department. You both should be proud of your accomplishments, and we welcome you to our Brookhaven family. Michael and Orabi will immediately begin training in our FTO program in order to familiarize them with our policies, procedures, report writing, as well as many other areas of policing. They will then ride with a field training officer who will work and train them in our day-to-day operations. Michael and Orabi, you are both being given a tremendous amount of responsibility and trust. We are all here to support you and help you in every way possible. I ask you each and every day to remember the trust given to you and work to the best of your ability. We wish you all the best as you embark on this career. I again congratulate you and your families. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mayor Leslie if she would join us, and Michael, if you would come forward along with your dad, Mike, who's gonna hold the Bible for you.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyalty vote. Aye.
Aye.
Michael Connor.
Michael Connor.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinance of Brookhaven Borough.
And the ordinance of Brookhaven Borough.
And that I will discharge my duties.
And I will discharge my duties.
As a full-time Brookhaven police officer.
As a full-time Brookhaven police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's.
To a person's.
Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Witness my hand and the official seal this sixth day of February 2023, signed by Mayor Denise Leslie and John Wilworth, the Borough Secretary. Congratulations.
And, Orabi, you are up. And you have your fiancee Victoria come up quickly.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyalty vote. Aye.
Aye.
For Orabi Yusef.
For Orabi Yusef.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the Borough of Brookhaven.
And the ordinance of the Borough of Brookhaven.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As a full-time Brookhaven police officer.
As a full-time Brookhaven police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Witness my hand and the official seal this sixth day of February 2023, signed by Mayor Denise Leslie and John Wilworth, the Borough Secretary. Congratulations.
Go ahead.
Guys, we're gonna have to have everybody come up and get some family pictures, and then I'll have all of our officers come up.
Yeah.
Officer Connor. Us Cardinal O'Hara guys, we stick together.
That's right.
You like it, Mr. Wills?
Yeah, Jay, he's reminded us about 50 times.
Hey, Hector's O'Hara, right?
One of them.
Yeah.
Right. We're in no rush.
You're gonna send them all to me? Yes. Other time I'm leaving, usually I get them to just...
Oh.
That's cute.
It's adorable.
Wide angle lines up.
Just don't stay on the chair.
I guess so. And you gotta smile. Timmy, gotta smile.
Sergeant, Janice.
Right out of Q Q magazine, you know what I mean?
Oh, my God.
Maybe Malcolm. I don't know about the rest of you.
So as Mrs. Heller said, the community room, which is just behind here, there's cake and there's drinks and stuff like that. I can tell you that it's more... You'll be much more entertained over there than you will be here, so...
Uh-huh. It's true.
We lost half of our fan club. No one cares about us.
Yeah, go ahead, now. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna congratulate our new officers. I know they're gonna be great assets here in Brookhaven. We're excited. And go Eagles! I'm gonna go have cake.
Can I rub it in like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know I do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Ms. Ford.
There she comes.
Good evening, Ms. Ford.
Good evening. And happy almost Valentine today, everyone. We're almost there. February 6th, we're ready. Alrighty, at Pendelco, one of our greatest priorities is ensuring students arrive safely at school each day. Pendelco is launching a new and more efficient reporting system called Safe Arrival for all of our parents that are in the audience and in council. As you may know, the system, uh... For reporting your child's absence, launched today, Monday, February 6th. The new system will make it easier for everyone to report their child's absence promptly and eliminate the need to submit an absence note. There's three different ways to report attendance. There will be an app the parents can download. They will still receive the phone call. They'll receive a text. They'll be able to confirm the text, and that takes care of the notes, things like that. It's just very efficient. They can go to school messenger, or they can still call. That rolled out today. Student council members are collecting bingo prizes for Fair Acres Geriatric Center until Friday, February 24th. Any donations may be dropped off at the school office. On Friday, Coburn teachers are planning a pep rally to show our support for the Eagles in the upcoming Super Bowl. It's my understanding there will be some fun surprises. I don't know all that's planned yet. Everybody's keeping it a big secret. Anyway, but I know there will be a lot of games, cheering, dancing, and just good old-fashioned fun for our kids. And, Mayor, go Birds, right? Whoop. Go Birds, right? And then, finally, our Kids' Heart Challenge is this month. The Heart Challenge is a fun and exciting event where our children learn about their heart health while helping others to raise money for the American Heart Association. All families have received information, and our kids participate regardless of donations. But I will report out in March. Our donations are typically pretty significant. Our community is very generous, and it's a yearly event that we are proud to host. So, go Birds! Follow us on Twitter to see what's happening daily at Huber Elementary. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Ms. Ford, I had a question. So that Heart Challenge, is that still the Jump Road?
Yes. The Heart Challenge was called the Jump Road for Heart is now called Kids' Heart Challenge. The name changed about three years ago, three or four years ago.
But it's the same concept.
Same thing.
Gotcha.
It still benefits the American Heart Association, and we do all kinds of things. You remember when the kids were there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. That opens the first public discussion session. If anyone would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and street for the record. Anyone? Going once, going twice. The first public discussion session is closed. Chief Montella.
Chief Weiss.
Chief Weiss.
Oh, I thought you left. I'm not paying attention tonight. Chief Weiss, come on up. I thought you went over and had a cake, yeah.
Alright. So for the month of January, the Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or was assigned a total of 836 cat assignments through Delcom. Some of the noteworthy incidents are listed here. We had three robberies, but they're categorized a robbery, one being the armed carjacking that we had. We have made an arrest in that. I foresee others coming. The other two were basically, not that I'm downplaying them, but they were retail thefts where somebody either implied force or used force, which makes that a robbery. So I don't want you to be alarmed that it was... These were not like gunpoint robberies. These were basically retail thefts where somebody elevated it based on their actions. We had two aggravated assaults. We had 25 thefts. We had two vehicle thefts, both of which have been recovered. One simple assault, one vandalism, five fraud, one liquor law violation, five public drunkenness arrests, two disorderly conducts, four DUIs, four narcotic investigations, eight animal complaints, one solicitor complaint, one noise violation, 32 suspicious conditions, five harassment complaints, 17 disturbances or domestic disputes, one juvenile complaint, one missing person. That person was located. Eight civil complaints, 84 medical assists, three mental health responses, 47 assist other departments, 23 alarms, 22 vehicle crashes, and 17 hazardous conditions or assisting motorists. For the month for arrests, there were 41 adults that were arrested, three juveniles were arrested. As a department, we issued 177 citations, 23 parking violations, and we issued 184 warnings. So again, you can see we, across the board, we're pretty comparable between citations and warnings. So administratively, obviously, our sergeant promotions took place in January, and I again want to congratulate Sergeants Havik and Eastman. I have dumped a lot on them in a very short period of time as we're quickly approaching our accreditation. So they have taken on these new roles exceptionally, so I'm very grateful for their help. I also congratulate again Officers Connor and Yusef on being hired full-time with our department tonight. Regarding accreditation, we are in the final one stretch. I had our mock assessment yesterday. That was a little grueling. But I am... I was nervous prior, and I am feeling very confident now with our accreditation process. So that will begin right and early on Monday, February 20th. So we have a lot to do with that when the assessors come in, but I am fully confident, as I had said before I even got hired here, we will reach accreditation. It will happen. And then the other thing I have is this month, we are recognizing Officer Malcolm Duff as our Officer of the Month. Officer Duff always has a common friendly demeanor. He's a team player. He works hard every shift. He's always willing to help out his fellow officers. He takes pride in making sure our students are getting... Are safe getting to and from school, and is often seen enforcing school zones and speed limits around our schools. We thank Officer Duff for his hard work and congratulate him on being selected as our Officer of the Month. Just real quick, as far as training, the beginning of the year brings on a lot of annual training that we have to do. So CPR, first aid, that's well underway. TASER, or less lethal shotgun training, that continues. And we had several officers already attend firearms training for the month. And we are very fortunate. We don't just qualify the mandatory minimums. We do above and beyond that. So we are getting a lot of range time. So I'm very happy with that. With that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, chief. Chief Montella.
Evening, chief.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Counsel.
Good evening, residents. Brookhaven Fire Company's January 2023 fire report. We had seven fire incidents, 23 non-fire, 31 calls for mutual aid, five drills for a total of 66 for the month. We had a 1,500-hour loss on structure, 1,500-hour loss on contents, $3,000 loss on vehicle fires, for a total of 6,000 for the month. We had $200,000 of property endangered in the borough. No firefighter injuries, no civilian injuries. Our manpower for fire was 66 calls, average of 14 firefighters in service for 679 hours for the month. Our training was five training sessions, 31 average firefighters, 362 hours of training logged for the month. The following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had five building fires in Brookhaven Borough. 121 Meadow Brook Lane, we had a heater fire. 3406 Edgemont Avenue, at the laundromat, we had a belt issue with one of the dryers. We had a building fire at 49... 4098 Edgemont Avenue, at the Walgreens. We had an issue with a rooftop unit there. 532 West Brookhaven Road, Stone Hill Apartments, Unit 82, we had a fire in a bathroom fan. And 3455 Mount Vernon Avenue, we had an electrical issue fire in the kitchen. We had two murder vehicle accidents with injuries, 352 on Butley Road, 352 on Roberts Road, one vehicle fire at 4930 Edgemont at the Giant, and we had a hazmat spill at 4703 Edgemont Avenue at the Wawa, which is a gas tanker truck had a antifreeze leak. So it was a coolant leak from the truck itself that it was... We assisted Chester Township Fire Department on a building fire at 3915 Nelson Road and a vehicle fire involving a oil truck at McDonald Boulevard Facility for Petro Fuel. Assisted Garden City Fire Company on a building fire at 748 West Brookhaven Road and assisted Aston Township Fire Department on two building fires, one at 224 Breakal Avenue, which was a working fire in the garage, and another building fire at 16 Scarlet Avenue. Assisted Lower Chi-Chester on a working building fire at 1633 Huddle Avenue. Assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on building fire at 1093 Boulder Pike at the Edge Fitness Club. Our monthly training started off with all our members training started off with all our members recertifying the SCBA training and certification search and rescue classes, and we have a demonstrated smokehouse set up in our shed out back for our members to train in. And we also like to thank the Holiday Committee. I know I didn't make the workshop meeting for their donations to the fire company from the Holiday Free. We thank them for that. Our ambulance report for 2623, we had 261 ambulance calls in the month of January. We had 149 patients transported to the hospital. 109 of them were local alarms and 129 of those were mutual aid. So, it's busy. I should have never said we were quiet at the end of the year last year. So, it just got a while. Thank you, Chief. They love when he says that.
Thank you, Mr. President, and a most good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the Solicitor's Report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would like to review it. I have one action item for Borough Council's consideration this evening, and again, that is a resolution authorizing a 16th partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements associated with the residences at Brookhaven Glen. That is our 55 and over community located at the intersection of Edgemont Avenue and Radio Lane. The request this evening is for an escrow release in the amount of $33,874.50. This escrow release has been reviewed by the Borough Engineer as well as my office. The engineer is recommending the escrow release in that amount, again, $33,874.50. And so, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt said resolution.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions on the motion? Carries unanimously.
Second item on my agenda concerns the recent MOU, or memorandum of understanding regarding the pay and compensation for the sergeant's position. Again, Borough Council had recently promoted two officers to the rank of sergeant. Again, we had to negotiate a pay scale for the sergeant's position. That has been agreed to by both the Borough and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 27 here in Delaware County, and both parties have countersigned that agreement. The original agreement is with the Borough Secretary's Office. Third item on my agenda concerns the Pando Property Group Development. This is the development of seven single-family detached dwellings that was completed, I guess, last year in 2022. What the Borough had found out is there was an ownership issue with regard to a 30-foot strip of land running from Brookhaven Road to Edwards Avenue, again, approximately 200 feet in length. After substantial research with the Delaware County Register Will's Office, the Recorder Adie's Office, and also some assistance from the Borough Engineers Office, we have tracked down and located the owner of that particular strip. As of last week, I have had written communication with that owner and I am waiting for a response. And when I receive that particular response, we will so notify Borough Council. Next item on my agenda concerns the property at 3607 Victor Avenue. This was a property that the Borough had filed a property nuisance abatement lien on this particular property back in 2020 as a result of property maintenance violations. I'm pleased to advise that we did in fact receive full payment for that municipal lien. And again, that includes court costs and attorney's fees. I have recently filed with the Office of Judicial Support up at the Delaware County Courthouse a presby to now satisfy that lien. And with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two action items for this evening. First one is the motion to approve the 2023 resurfacing program list. In the meeting package, there's a list, primary list of streets. It consists of maybe two dozen streets.
What is the pleasure of the council? Anyone want the motion, in other words?
I'll send it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions on the motion?
No.
Answers unanimously.
And the second motion would be to authorize the advertisement of the bids for that street paving program.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions on the motion? Motion carries unanimously.
My report is on file. Just one thing I do want to mention to council is, you've noticed that the state has another park and recreation grant application period open. This is a community conservation partnership program. It's a 50% match. It's for, you know, any, any project involving conservation or recreation. This year's, I guess, priority from the state is the rehabilitation of existing parks. That application is due April 5th. Gives us some time to make a project that someone would want to do.
We will get on it.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Catania, I have something to tell, tell you. So, PICO is doing some work on my street, and I just wanted to make you aware that I didn't get a letter. I don't know if you guys did.
I didn't get a letter.
We didn't get a letter. The street is, I mean, there, today, my driveway was actually closed. My daughter couldn't even get out of the driveway. So, it would have been very helpful if we would have gotten some type of notice from PICO, letting us know exactly what they're doing on our street, considering it's all dug up.
Just drive on the grass.
I, I called PICO about that. I got an email saying they were going to send out another second letter. So, that's now two letters that people didn't get.
John, who did you correspond with, you know?
Michelle Garty. I can give you the number.
Well, once civic ready is up and running, we will not have these gaps in communication. So, once we are made aware, the public will be made instantly aware, which we hope to have that up and running by April 1st.
We know how long that PICO project's going to last.
Two weeks?
Months.
She said six months.
It's months.
Well, you better park on the street, Ms. Fuchs.
Or another street.
Do you need that number, Mr. Catania?
No, that is unfortunate. They, they should have communicated that out.
So, is the street closed? Because I know when I take the kids to...
It is during the day.
At times.
Yeah, at times. I know during midday, it's closed.
This says it's closed.
At times, at times.
Oh, it's closed.
At times, it is.
I know between 2:00 and 3:00, that street is closed because I have to cut through on the side streets when I take the kids home from school.
They put a sign up.
They do. They put a sign up. People ignore it and go through it, but they have a sign that says "street closed."
Well, again, once civic ready is up and running, we will have, we will fill in these gaps in communication, which was the plan all along for civic ready. Yes, sir?
John, I had a, had a phone conference with them before they started outlining everything they were supposed to be doing. If they're not doing it, I would suggest that one of two things happens. We'll contact PICO tomorrow, ask for another meeting with them, clear it up, and if it continues, we just shut the job down, you know? They have a street open permit from the borough.
I mean, another work has to get done. It's important work, but it just would have been nice to...
You gotta, you gotta take care of our residents. We can't be closing streets and those kinds of things without notification, right?
They're notifying us.
You know?
Yeah, some days.
Yeah.
That's two different answers. Got to be one that they're notifying.
Do you folks get any letters? Do you get a letter?
No, they didn't get a letter either.
But it doesn't always come over the fire for some reason.
So, when they...
They didn't get the original letter.
So, unless we drove down...
They couldn't get to work.
...houses and then dial that way. So, I do have a question. When they do close the street, is there supposed to be a flagger or anybody there with the street sign that says that it's closed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm asking for myself because I know the last few days that I've been going down that street. There, I see people working. The sign's up, but there's nobody around. So, just for future references.
If you need to get out or into your driveway, stop one of the workers. They'll slide a steel plate over the hole and you can go in and out of the driveway. I don't know if we wanted to come to that every time you have to leave your driveway.
Well, my daughter had to do that today.
The solution, the solution is rather than wasting your more time is Mr. Wilbert and Mr. Catania can meet with PICO and make sure that they have it, make it as little inconvenience as possible to the residents of the street.
I'll send you the emails that they sent me.
So, maybe instead of sending a letter, maybe they, since they're already on the street, they actually hand in the letter.
Mr. Catania and Mr. Wilbert, will you take care of that tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the only question.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir? Are you okay?
No, thank you.
I only have a few items. A motion to approve the January 9, 2023 council meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions on the motion? None opposed. Motion to approve the January 23, 2023 council workshop meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? No questions on the motion? I have a very brief civic ready notification system. I'm forming a committee to deal with the civic ready notification system. Mr. Gilroy wished to step off of the project, which was being handled by the tech committee. So, the committee shall be comprised of myself as chair, Mrs. Heller and Mrs. Fuchs as members, as well as Mimi McGovern as a member. And we have a, and Mr., with Mr. Wilbert's assistance, you can't be a committee member. You're an employee. I did add Mr. Wilbert's assistance. So, you're expected to be there off hours, whether you like it or not. I want to, I want to launch that by April 1st, hopefully much sooner. It will be a good tool once, once it's, once it's launched. I don't really actually have an update on the Hope for Haley Sanctuary Garden, other than it's progressing nicely. I'll have a full update on that hopefully next month. And an executive session to announce, which will be held immediately after this meeting. Subject is personnel. Go Eagles. Ms. Swicki.
Yes, thank you. We do have bills to be paid this month. A total of $1,193,558.10.
My goodness.
General fund was $140,262.68. The large portion of that was our 2022 Delkor bill, which is due next week. So, we're paying it $1,049,730. So, that's what made the total so large. Sewer fund, the total, when you add that 22 bill, was $1,053,206.92. Trash was $88.50. So, I am going to make a motion that we do pay the bills for February.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
So, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you. The ordinance committee will meet on Thursday, February 16th at 6:30 to discuss ordinances that involve borough property. Rec board, news, and borough events. So, volleyballs, I'm happy to report is back. The next session will begin on Tuesday, March 7th, and conclude on Thursday, May 11th. The cost is $50 for either Tuesday or Thursday evening, or $75 for both nights. Please call the Borough Office if interested, and it is first come, first served, capped at 18 to 20 people. So, if you want to play, please sign up early. Our Easter egg hunt will be on Saturday, April 1st. Pictures with the Easter bunny at 10:00 a.m., and the hunt will begin at 11:00 a.m. The rain date will be Sunday, April 2nd. Tickets will be available during the day in the office, and we have night hours for our residents, and that would be on Tuesday evenings, March 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at Borough Hall. March 28th is our egg stuffing in the community room. I believe that's at 6:00 p.m., Tom? 6:00 p.m. So, if you'd like to help, come on over. 6:00 p.m., March 28th. Our next orphal aging craft class would be on Sunday, March 19th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Please register with the office, and this is for seniors only, please. Our next rec board meeting will be on Thursday, February 23rd at 7:00 p.m. here in the council room. And our shred and electronics recycling event will be held on Saturday, April 29th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon at Coburn Elementary's parking lot. Please do not combine electronics and shredding together, and please do not include batteries in your shredding. For electronics recycling, anything with a cord is accepted, and for shredding, please note binders, binder clips, or paper clips. And that is all of my report. Go Eagles.
Go Eagle indeed. Mr. Pappas, sir?
I have a report for the saving.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vaskus.
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning hearing board met on the 25th January regarding a garage. It was unanimously approved. No future meeting in the works as of right now, but who knows? That could change. On due public works, I'm just going to keep this brief. The public works team cleaned 4,650 feet, just shy of 4,650 feet of sanitary sewer, sewer mains. They were cleaned on eight different streets. A video inspection that was done at 4924 Grant Drive by John's Reliable Plumbing, that was inspected, and the reports were sent to Catania Engineering. There was also a sewer smell at the sewer treatment plant that was called in. The results for this smell were negative. Catania Engineering was there as well, as well as KBX operator. There was three sinkholes to report. One at the rear of 725 Rick Circle. The holes were dietested and the results were found that the line belongs to the shopping center. Any exposed holes were covered up for safety issues. The second sinkhole was at the side yard of 632 Kenny Lane. The hole was filled with dirt to prevent any issues of tripping hazards. The hole was next to the storm sewer inlet. Mr. Baker was there from Catania Engineering. And for the third and final one is 141 Bradbury. This was also reported to Catania Engineering. The Christmas tree pickup has been completed. A total of 240 trees were collected and shipped. It's too late to do it now because we're done with that. Seven Hero banners were replaced. 39 PA Won Call tickets were answered for the month of January. 500 pounds of coal patch were used to fill potholes throughout the borough. See a pothole, it's on the Brookhaven Road, give the office call, send our guys out, and we'll fill the pothole. Don't need any flat tires, bent rims, or anything like that, if we can prevent that. There's one ice event in the month of January. 1.5 tons of salt were distributed throughout the borough. Trash and debris was removed from the roadside of Cambridge and Butley Road. There was a down tree on Hill Drop Drive. It was on the curb line. It is removed. Picnic benches are being repaired and prepped for the upcoming spring season. There's no accidents or injuries to report for the month of January. The department conducted eight hours of training for the month. The operation and maintenance of the chipper and operation and maintenance of the sewer jet machine were the topics. And that is my full report.
Thank you, Mr. Vaskus. Mr. Gilroy is present. Mrs. Heller.
So, just a few things. The first thing I have is the field light project. We had a kickoff meeting on Tuesday, January 24th. We discussed actually starting the lighting project for the fields, the week of July 17th, 2023, and anticipating six to eight weeks for that project, depending on the weather. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 21st, and I want to thank both baseball and softball, as well as the engineer, as well as Mrs. Fuchs for attending that meeting and that kickoff meeting. Softball and baseball's opening day parade is on Saturday, April 15th, 2023. The fire committee met on Thursday, February 2nd. We just discussed the update on the new fire truck, the EMT hiring process, and an upcoming project that will be discussed during the executive session. John, am I reading this? Would you like to read that? You want to read that? Okay. Okay. And then the last bit of business I have is that I am making a motion to terminate Police Officer Robert Barth.
Who wants the second?
I'll take the second.
Actually, let's go to a roll call on this. Mr. Wilbert, give us a roll call.
Did you say yes?
Sorry. Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mrs. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Gilroy's absent. Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Ms. Swicki?
Yes.
Mr. Vaskus?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Six oh with Mr. Gilroy present. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Mr. Leslie, sir?
Mr. Leslie. Okay, the chief reported on all the fires that we had in the borough. I just want to comment on one thing. I know it's somebody's job out there. That's how they make a living. But when our residents have a fire, and I reported on this before, these public adjusters come up when these people are most vulnerable, and they get them to sign paperwork and contracts. People in Meadow Brook Lane, they did that right after the fire company left. There was like seven of them. They were banging on this girl's door to get to work, to clean the place. It's just terrible. I, I asked before if we could put those signs back up in the borough, but they never happened. Entering the borough, no peddling or soliciting without a permit. I don't know if that comes under that or not, but these people are very vulnerable when they have a fire.
The sheriff will probably answer that best. I don't think that falls in soliciting or peddling, if I'm not mistaken.
And they, they attack our residents, basically, and I don't like it. That's just my opinion. And the other, the other... And the other, the other stuff I have to report on, everybody had the 911 call right away on the other fires that we had, and that's very unusual for us here in the borough. Generally, I'm reporting, it's a delayed 911 call. So that's the end of my report, Mr. Heller. Thank you.
Mr. Polo.
Good evening, everyone. With regards to code enforcement for the month of January, I only had five letters of compliance I sent out, six issues. I met with the owners of the property to resolve, a couple of other calls to the owners resolved those issues, and then a citation. Another thing to note, we've had a PICO pole on the sidewalk around 3, 3,300 block, Edgemont Avenue. Working with PICO, finally got that removed this month. The other hat I wear with the building, we had January 31 contractor's license applied for and issued, 43 building permits applied for, 29 issued, 10 zoning permits applied for. One thing to note, all the forms that we had on the, not all the forms, most of the forms are on the website. I had gone and tweeted and touched up with Mimi's help there. Most of them are on the website now, right?
Right.
Okay. There was one where I consolidated like four forms to one form to make it a lot easier for the public. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Grant, do you have a report?
I have one.
Thank you, sir. It was the second public discussion session. If anyone would like to speak in public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and street for the record.
I've got nothing. I've got nothing. This is loud, so I can't talk.
You have nothing at all, is there?
I knew if I put it on there, you wouldn't come.
I know, right.
That is, that is the best gift we've received all week.
That's true.
I'm just playing, Tom. I'm just playing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public discussion? Going once, going twice, the second public discussion session is closed. Mr. Wilbert?
Yes, I would like to say something here. Over the weekend, actually Friday night, we had an icon of this borough pass away, Betty Kelly. And I wanted to read a short thing about Betty, and she was, I'm going to get work teared up here. Betty M. Kelly, age 96, was a longtime resident of Brookhaven, PA. She died on Friday, February 4th, 2023. She was a woman of faith and was an active parishioner of the Church of Our Lady of Charity. Mrs. Kelly was devoted to the Society of St. Vincent de Paul. Betty, Betty was very active in Brookhaven Borough, where she was a member of the Recreation Board, Recreation Board, the Board of Governors of Brookhaven Swim Club, former president of Brookhaven Fire Company, Ladies Auxiliary, a member of the Board of Health and Town, and she was also a official, official town watch member through which she attended the Citizens Police Academy. She was a member of the Social Club of Traditions Community, a member of the American Legion , Aston Post 926, and a volunteer at Crozier Hospital for more than 30 years. Betty cherished spending time with her family and friends, a kind and generous person. Betty was an inspiration to others with her courage and giving nature. She was great, she will be greatly missed and eternally remembered by all who are fortunate enough to know her. Betty was a great lady, and if you knew her, you lived in this town, you knew who Betty Kelly was, if you lived here for any length of time. For those who are interested, her visitation is Wednesday, February 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Minchell Sharpshire, up on Middletown Road, and her funeral mass will be at the, a church at St. Francis de Sales, and memorial donations may be made to the Church of Our Lady of Charity.